Yep.
Have pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Noted that we do have a forum. Now, all is present. Is the clerk re- recording the minutes via online?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm pulling up there. You can see everybody.
I heard the seniors say someone's, but I haven't heard anything. She fell down and broke her arm.
What?
She fell down and broke her wrist.
Let's go to A, new business, mayoral duties and responsibilities. Anybody got any questions?
I don't have any questions, but. If you, your authority, but we're here because we're looking at changing to going forward. And we had some problems a couple of days ago. Um, I mean, a hostile work environment in here for people. And you were upset because you, somebody wouldn't give you administrative key over the computer, which they can't. But you say, no, that's been worked out, but then you were mad because Kim hired a cleaning lady without you, but you were busy at the time. We're not disputing your powers as individual counsel, but as governing body, we absolutely have to say that things are happening are not sustainable and we need to address and make changes. I mean, it says on here on your book that you handed me on page four, this was key concepts, the governing bodies are decision makers. This entitled, Thinking in Positive Terms About Providing Help in the Town. It sets resolution decisions, policies, and other directives that the mayor and staff carry out. So it's a good work together, not against.
And that's what we've done, done for years and it's worked.
I know, but all of a sudden now it's just like, I don't know, Joel. You got all mad because we interviewed those, the cleaning lady. But you were busy trying to get that stuff done before city council that night. She thought she was doing you a good thing.
Well, it's my understanding that all department heads have carried out the interviews. Um, and that's been prior to me, uh, being the board, but, uh, department heads have set that up and handled that. Now, reading through the um, town ordinance, it says in the town ordinance that mayor can or cannot be on that. Is what it says. Um, with that doesn't say he has to be on it, but it doesn't say can't be.
Right.
They said the mayor or his designate can be on, can be on that, on that, on that committee. But the, the mayor should be. But the mayor, mayor needs to be, mayor needs to be brought up and notified.
And you were gonna be that next morning before you went off on Kim.
I I, I asked what, how the meeting uh, went and I was informed that someone was already hired.
Right. We interviewed both.
Sure.
And I know I have been with you on doing department heads, but I've never seen you where um, Bart and them just hired that new girl. Were you there for that interview?
I wasn't there for the interview, but Bart came and talked to me.
But Bart's not a department head.
No, but anyway, that was him and my, they, they decided that she was going to be hired and she, they can't be, and I said.
And you never let Kim get that far.
Huh?
You never let Kim get that far.
Jim, Kim.
Seriously, Joel, you didn't.
It's, uh, that was ne- that was never offered.
Oh, Kim wasn't kind of hired for her own deal? She's the department head.
You know, a department head cannot hire, it has to be approved by the mayor.
You just said that Bart and.
He came, Bart came to me and I gave his approval.
And so Kim was coming to you with that.
That is.
But Bart isn't a department head, damn it. So I don't know why Bart is making that recommendation to anybody.
Because the department. Uh, Mike, Mike and Bart did the interview.
Well, that's fine, but okay, but Tammy didn't come to you and tell you who they were hiring on the interview process for the contracted cleaning person. So why is Bart? Your department head is, is what it says is the direction of.
Sure.
What?
So.
Mind if I interject here a little bit and kind of go through a few things?
Please do.
Okay, so I, I know everybody's seen the letter that the previous attorney, Mr. Marple sent out. And I'm not gonna, uh, dispute that letter. I think he's on point on law stuff, but he also doesn't paint the whole picture either. Uh, and so fifteen, one, one oh eight states that the mayor has superintending control over all offices and affairs. Superintending control is a legal term. Uh, legal art, I guess you'd say, and what it means is general supervision over departments. And it actually comes down, that's what they use when they're talking about higher courts supervising lower courts and reviewing decisions that are made. Uh, so it's not necessarily day to day operations so much as, uh, what a CEO of a company would do. Uh, allow their people to do their job and review that work when it come, when it needs to be. Uh, so the other, uh, part is fifteen, two, one, zero, two. And regarding the, uh, appointments of officers and anyways, when you get down to appointments of officers or hiring, the, uh, governing body can create descriptions and duties uh, as part of that, and they're allowed to do that and define what each department head can or cannot do. Um, so as I, so long as it doesn't, uh, how I want to say, doesn't go against state statute. And though that can be done either by ordinance or resolution. And so the town of Shoshone, as you go further down, I went into looking at the description and duties that had been approved by the governing body in, uh, I believe it was twenty twenty-three for the treasurer and clerk. And it gets down to where it beside, uh, includes interviewing staff with counsel. So I, and I understand that this is a contract position, so that's one of the issues that you guys are gonna have to decide, but ultimately uh, the governing body, however you decide to go forward, I think it would be best if you did clarify some of these issues going forward and realize that maybe there's a better way to do it and better way to communicate things and have this ironed out a little bit instead of going back and saying would have, you know, well, having the argument, if that, if that makes any sense, but, um, but general body, if you decide to set up a policy on how department heads are able to hire and not hire and have the mayor review, you can do that. If you so decide to make that a department head responsibility and part of their job description.
That makes sense to me that a policy be written up. I don't know, I don't know if one had been or not. It does look like there has been, but you know, just a hiring procedure that gets approved by the governing body, which is us.
Right.
With the position description for that position, which makes sense, again, it will eliminate a lot of it's, this sounds more procedural than anything else, you know, I mean, with the lack of that procedure. There's a lot of conjecture of what should be and what shouldn't be. So a procedure would really help clarify the pathway. And I think that really is important for good operation. I mean, to allow the mayor to be the CEO, but then also have the appropriate input as, as required, you know, I mean, that just really makes sense to me.
Yeah, a- and if I may, may point this out here, uh, it is in the job description here for the clerk to interview hiring for her staff with counsel. Uh, that, that's already in there, but it does in her job description. But, um, again, this is a contract, so it's a little different.
So what does the with counsel mean, Marshall?
Means that counsel can sit in on the interview.
You mean an attorney?
No.
No, I was there. I was there for the.
Okay, alright, I.
A council member.
Okay, alright, that makes.
And that's, I was there.
And that's where you were there.
Because she's the legion.
And you're saying that was, uh, something that was changed in twenty twenty-three?
That, I didn't say it was changed. I'm saying that was actually in the job description for the town clerk that was approved by the governing body, at least the one that's currently up on your website, and I believe it was twenty twenty-three.
Remember we would approve the description.
But does that does that, uh, that doesn't kick the mayor out of, of approving the, the hire? Does it?
Uh, well, I, you know what, if I was, you could interpret it one way and saying that that has given the authority to the clerk to hire someone for her staff, or I guess you could say, well, it's just an interview only. I mean, it could go either way, but I would, I think the intent at that time was to give the department heads the authority to hire.
Oh, I was mayor at that time and, uh, that definitely wasn't no intent of that.
Yeah, I understand that, Joel, and this is the other issue is like I'm saying, this is for a contract position as well. So it, it.
You're correct.
Which, which also makes it different, but that's the way it was written in there when the job description was written.
We're not a damn dictator.
I.
It certainly seems that we're getting to a point that it's a dictatorship. I have to have the final say in everything.
I wanted that.
At the end of the day, if we hire employees as department heads, we're putting our faith in them that they're gonna make the right judgment
Right.
and who they hire. And if we don't have a department head that's not doing so, it's probably essential to look at the department head, but I think with what I see, the mark current department heads, they're hiring most of the time, uh, accurately. And when they're not, I think they adjust to what that is. So what my, what I'm saying in less words is they're doing their job. And so why the hell are we overstepping their boundaries for a control piece? Cause that's what it clearly is to me, is we have to have the final say because you're the mayor. Well, if we have these people in the place to do their job, let's let them do their damn job.
So that another book I request, that's our policies and procedures.
You're talking about the guideline manual.
The guideline manual. I don't know how binding that is. That was approved
twenty nineteen.
Approved by vote on January seventh, twenty twenty. I mean, it was written in twenty nineteen, approved in twenty twenty. And if that's at all binding, this is the part that got me. Uh, in accordance with town Shoshone ordinances, the mayor with the consent of the governing body shall hire department heads. So he picks them, we say yes or no. That's the way I understand that.
Right.
Correct.
A department head with the consent of the mayor shall hire subordinate employee, which to me says they pick them with the consent of the mayor, yes or no? And so if this, if this, uh, if our guideline document is a policy that has to be followed.
But that's not what she was hired under. It's not what.
The, the hiring.
No, her, yeah.
Oh, the contract.
I guess. Okay, I'm just saying that with that. If he picks the department heads with the consent of the governing body, department heads pick employees with consent of the mayor.
But this is, Marshall?
Yes.
Uh, uh, this is not a ten ninety-nine employee. It's, I mean, it's not a ten ninety-nine typical contract employee. This is actually an employee that we're holding taxes out of?
No.
No.
Yeah, it, so it's, this is where I'm a little confused, cause just to back up here, so I haven't, I don't have a copy of the, the two thousand nineteen policies. Um, which changes my, my view a little bit, but the, the supervision of staff. Clearly the treasurer has the ability to do that as well as to interview for positions. Now, the, so you're saying is upon the hiring has to be with the mayor's consent. So I think again, it just needs to come back where the, the process in your policies just needs to be more clear on how that's done. Going forward.
I'm following the policy that I've been, had legal counsel that tell me many years ago, and I've been following best I can that policy. I don't intervene with many of my department heads or, or they're hired. I, I just want to be kept in the loop. As Chris is.
You walked by that office three times when we were interviewing those girls. And even stuck your head in and said hi. Didn't you, Joel?
I had no input. I had no what was going on there and I didn't know who. And I didn't, I did not, I knew there was an interview going on. I did not.
One girl told us that you sent her in there and told her how much that she should ask for and everything.
No, I, I think that, that, that's no.
Okay.
It's, uh, one, okay, I, I ended up knowing both of them. I had no idea who, who was applying. Ended up knowing both of them. Had no, no idea. But, uh.
She said you called her personally.
And said there was a, it could be a Joel, I'm sure, because we need to find somebody.
Right.
And I knew that was a competent individual.
But the other one was more.
Correct. Yeah, got no problem, but I got zero problem, but it was hard. I just wanted to be in, in, in the loop. And if I would have been said, yes, that we, we did the interview, one of the candidates stood out over the other one. This is the one we, we should hire. And I go, that's great.
Well, we can, we can kick the dead horse a million times here, but the bottom line is just like we talked about yesterday when I came into the town hall was the matter is is maybe the communication from yourself and or the town clerk could have enunciated who the hire was, but to have this dictatorship mindset of when it should have been delivered to you, I think is a little out of the wheelhouse. I also think the delivery of the way you communicate carries a long ways, and I'm not just saying you, I'm saying anybody. Um, and so if you communicate with friction and, uh, anger in your voice, it's probably perceived as such. And so if you may have went in there and were disgruntled because you were kicked out of the internet and came a little bit friction, friction, frictional, or whatever you want to say there, but it only creates backlash and then it ended in a, in, in a match of who had the power, and that is not.
No, it's not who has the power, but follow the rules.
But that's fine, but is that.
That's all I, all I ask.
And I understand that, but that's not how the message was delivered. Which is an issue. If you, if you come in your work environment and start screaming and yelling at somebody.
I didn't start screaming and yelling at anybody.
If you start talking with anger in your voice.
Yeah, we have someone in the audience, please.
I'm Bo waiver. I brought that two thousand nineteen deal, and I guess my only issue with this you know, e- everyone here, including mayor, has one vote on this thing, so whether Joel likes a person, doesn't like a person, he's one vote. Um, I myself, I know Stacy. And I'm sure the other gal's super qualified too. It's not my, my deal. I just know that you know, from a school perspective with my wife teaching there, she's always spoke very highly of her. My issue on it is it sounds like a big miscommunication on some of this. As for the gruff stuff with the other deal, that's not my business. I just read up on my old one and, uh, I think it to where I want to be. Basically, it says that a department head will go to the mayor on the candidates that he's wanting for the job position. And then the mayor moves that forward to the council when it's all said and done. Then, you know, everybody can make their decisions, so on and so forth, but on this thing, it's, 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 it is clear that the department head, not Bart on certain things or anything, but the department head is supposed to report to Joel.
Hadn't had a chance yet.
But was the person already hired?
No.
But I guess, I guess what I'm guessing, I guess what I'm guessing that is.
That's what he keeps bringing up. He says that we hired her that night. We did not.
Oh, okay.
I, I was. I, I, I was told she was hired. No.
And did you hear that from Kim?
Yes.
The next morning?
Yes, I did.
The next morning?
Yes. That's what I'm talking about.
But if you look at her description of her job, it says she could.
You look at what I'm reading, says, says she can't.
So let's change that then. Let's fix that where the heads of things, they can do their hiring.
But that, that's all I had on that. It just, it looks like department heads are supposed to go to Joel.
Yes.
And she did the next morning, but Joel, he told me and Jordan that he was angry because Kim had told him no about administrative on the internet.
That was.
And you told us that's why you were mad.
That, that, I, I you know, that, that was afterwards. That was had nothing to do with this.
Are we talking about hiring or the computer?
Well, that's.
Yeah, that's all.
It was a two, it was a two-step monkey here because we went in and then it was.
So which one are we trying to talk about at the moment?
Well, that's what he told us. He was mad because she wouldn't get, she told him no.
That, that was, that was, that was, that all after the job, the job deal.
But she told you no.
She had already hired he, hired her. And I, I, I did, I didn't know the name. I didn't know who applied. If I'd have known all of that, I would have been comfortable, but I, I didn't know nothing.
You remember because we didn't hire a friend.
For a department hire, no, before you hire, before you hire, I've known Stacy a lot longer than I knew the other ones. But if you, if you, before hire, they should come to date, this is we're gonna hire this person. I reckon this is why. That's all I needed to know. That's all I needed to know. I've been just fine. Not that we hired it and it's already.
So you told him to go home and tell she could get it together.
I, I could see that Kim was very agitated and that was after talking about there again, I asked her, I need it because I have computer issues. I need to be able to re, be able to do a reset. And I could tell Kim was very upset and I suggested, yeah, she should go home because she was very obviously upset and, and she had things to do and I had things to do.
But you told me and Jordan, you were mad when you walked in there because she had told you no the day before.
Week before.
No.
Again, that.
The week, the week.
Both of us.
But that was, that was after that, the deal, that was after we already, we talked about the, the the new, uh.
So when did she do, you know, about administrator?
After.
Last week.
Last week.
Is that when she told you no?
The first time, yes.
Okay.
I gave her, I gave her a week to sort that out and I asked why. And her answer, why? Because she's, well, it's great. I get, I'm too stupid or something. I'm gonna screw everything up. He said I would go screw everything up. Yes, she did.
But I wanted a personnel issue.
Yeah, I think we are.
Yeah, that's great. I'd hate to get jammed up lately.
Yep. Yeah, I got some text message. I'm not gonna read them.
I absolutely, Joel, did not say that.
Hey, I, I'm gonna, I, I agree. I think we're getting way off into the weeds here. Everybody instead of talking about individual personnel, needs to stick to the general policy.
My understanding is, Marshall, that the way you interpreted it as our town attorney, the department head has the authority to hire. So there's no issue done there.
Well, I, no, that's not what I said. Is what I said is in your job description, you've given them the ability to do interviews and now you have this policy that's saying that Joel has to be involved. I think you have two conflicting issues.
Policy, when, twenty twenty? And Kim was hired when?
Twenty-two or twenty-three? Either or, yeah, maybe twenty-three. So wouldn't the newest.
Would, yeah, so what would we go by?
supersede.
Again, it doesn't say hire, it says interview.
Yeah, and.
That's all we've done.
And the policy says hire with the consent of the mayor.
Which hadn't, you haven't got there yet.
Okay, well, instead of this stuff, my recommendation is uh, the department head interviews takes their candidate that they think is fit to hire and they bring it to the governing body and we can vote on it that way. Uh, that way one person doesn't have, um, a single deal, um, as far as a yea or nay. Um, and the council's aware of who's being hired and we vote on it. Um.
I don't blame, that makes any sense.
I certainly do.
It's if you need, yeah, have a council meeting every two weeks, if you need to hire someone, uh, to, to do that, uh, and you'd be waiting every, every two weeks you'd have before you could hire somebody.
Yeah, um, Joel, mind if I step in there for a second?
Yes, go ahead.
That also would create a problem because the council doesn't have the authority to hire anybody, only the mayor does, he, uh, or the executive department heads with the authority if it's granted in their job descriptions. So, um, and unfortunately, there's case law out there that says, you know, a council member or any government official can't do anything more than what they're expressly granted by, uh, state statute. So I believe the council, you, you can approve job descriptions and policies and procedures on how the hiring is done below the department heads because you do, uh, you do vote on who the. Uh, you do vote on who the can be hired as a department head. But uh beyond below the uh. Department heads, I don't believe you have the authority to make those decisions on who gets hired.
I guess we're straight away from where it says department head. Going to the mayor. I agree that shouldn't be solely based on one person's decision. But to me, the department had screwed up. But not going to Joel with it because if he would have. He can't just sit there and consider aside and say, no, you have to put it to the council.
I'm gonna clarify this, okay? She didn't hire. They interviewed. They wanted this person. They recommended that person. She had not talked to Joel yet. Know that. You're hired. Here's the paperwork. Hasn't been filled out or completed.
Yeah, I might.
Know that it took place and never got to the.
I'm just saying, I don't think this would have happened if proper protocol was involved.
It was followed.
Not from the department.
She was a department.
To be followed is not to come into her office. And ransack her and make a hostile work environment here.
Great. I have no issue with that.
That that is that is toxic for anybody.
No, what I'm talking about is just. He's supposed to go to him. And then just watch you guys for this.
A- a- again, I'm I'm gonna ask everybody. To kind of lay off any specifics about any employees or department heads about what has happened and stick with policy going forward.
Yes.
Please.
So her policy with her job description gave her the right to do the interview with the city council member.
The way I read that, yes.
And what you're saying also is that there was there had not been the time yet to talk to the mayor.
Right, because we'd had.
So the process was being followed.
Yes, because we had city council that night and you were all here for that. We didn't get out here till what nine o'clock almost. And the next morning this broke out.
So there just hadn't been a time to follow through on policy.
Right.
I mean, you know, life was in both. You guys can change it.
Right, and I think we need to do some changing.
But for now, it has to be, it has to be followed.
Right. And we did follow it.
No, you guys did, but the department head did not.
And it happened yet.
Yeah, she hadn't got there yet.
Yeah, it hadn't happened yet, so she.
I again, let's uh hold off on uh talking about what a- any employee or.
That's what happened. That according to the position description. I had no problem with interview. No hiring decision had been made. Nobody had been called. Nobody had been notified, said you got the job. That's the point here and we're missing that in this conversation. It hadn't happened yet.
Right.
So I think it sounds to me like our policy is fine. I mean, that it's been it was working the way it was supposed to, except it hadn't been given the appropriate time to be able to get completed.
Yep.
So. What's next? I think it sounds like we're.
I think we got a good policy news. If it's followed, it works.
Yeah.
But I think we need to make some policy where the um department heads can choose their own. Instead of people coming forward, being somebody's friends and then being trying to push them to happen to hire them. Because we've seen it before.
You know, I. I understand that. I mean, I I get that, you know, but there's also the good order. Of how policies work and how they go and the order is defined by the policy that's out there and. You know, I come from, I've been in multiple organizations where the CEO, the president, the whatever. Had the chance, I mean, not the chance, but had the responsibility to approve or not approve. I mean, that was just a good order that happened with that and that sounds like kind of where our policy is at now. You know, and. So, I mean, I.
It's this, this policy is pretty prevalent throughout the state.
Yeah, it. It makes sense. It's common practice.
Understanding is that it's the department heads. Job to interview, select a person. Clear it through the executive office. And then finish the deal. It sounds like maybe that I don't know what was happening because we're not talking about it anyway.
Sounds like we obviously had maybe some miscommunication.
Breakdown that maybe needs to be handled as a personnel issue, not an open meeting, say.
Correct. Like we had a breakdown in communication.
And I don't think as council, we want to get into the minutia of running the town.
Well, oh, hell no.
Yeah, exactly. And that that's where this is at and I don't think we should go there.
We already are part of when we hire a head. We all have to be there. When we hire a head of the department.
A department head, correct.
If it's a part of the, you know, then then that's fine, but not the day to day activities. Yeah. No, that's where we lie. Our trust and who our department head is.
Right.
And you set the governing body sets what the requirements are for the mayor to operate. And supervising the department, what the expectations are, job descriptions, responsibilities, all those things. And then after that, it falls on the mayor and department heads to run the town. I mean, in a nutshell.
Yeah, right. Said what we're doing working. We had a miscommunication.
May I uh make a suggestion? Because I think we're in part B here where we're talking about the administrative process now, um. If possible, I'd like to get a copy of the policy and procedures and I can go ahead and make sure that. We update that to include the portion that everybody seems to like as well. That's in the job description, but doesn't seem to be in the policy. Where the department heads interview. Candidates with council members if the council members choose to be there and the uh those recommendations then go forward to the mayor. For hire.
Other part of that. Policy was that that mayor can also. Interview the person if they choose to. To be.
Or I just may. To be in on the interview committee.
Yeah, that's not actually what it says. It says that.
What's the necessary point to have a second interview?
No, it isn't a second interview.
It says. All candidates recommended for hire may be interviewed by the mayor or his designated prior to hire. That would be a second interview.
That's not necessary.
I didn't say it was necessary. I'm saying that's what it says.
If you'd like to be in on the interview, he has that running.
Like I said, he walked right into the office three times and stuck his head in and said hi.
Yeah, again, I'm gonna ask that we refrain from talking about what happened.
I think we're gonna need a sign stating that. There we need somebody to kick somebody under the table to keep them on track. I know that works, but we we have any more.
There's no reason for a second interview and right, Marshall?
It's.
You know what I I'm what I'm gonna tell you is that is. Uh, that's a decision for the council to decide on how they want that policy to read. So long as it doesn't violate state statutes.
But if. Marshall wants to look at the policy and do some revisions and bring that to us. And at that point, we had the discussion about that and there may be other revisions that come out of it. I mean, I would expect what Jordan's bringing up would be a part of that discussion.
Right.
You know, and then we'd have others like me and say, no, I think it's fine, you know, so we'd have that back and forth a little bit, but in good, you know, good faith. You know, but uh that's how policies get done, right? I mean. We come forward and we have a discussion about what we have. So I, if there's if we need a motion, I'd like Marshall to, I move that Marshall reviews that policy. And comes to the council, the administrative body with. Governing body, sorry, governing body with his proposed revisions.
Yeah, I would like to like to put in the. The guideline book. And this is also with count. We had our city attorney develop that. Good. Yeah, don't mean that we don't need to make changes, but this is and that's been my that's been my guiding. As mayor, that's what's guided me.
Well, that's usually how policy is made is when some something gets screwed up or there's a miscommunication, so I just. That's how it happens, so.
Sure, okay, that's.
I second.
Do we need uh?
If we if we needed it, there's the second.
Well, you're all you're doing is you're asking me to, if the count by consensus can just. Tell me to go ahead and do that, that or the mayor can tell me to do that, I guess, but you really don't need to vote on it.
I didn't think. Yeah, please do. Let's look at it. That was something I needed looked at in any event here.
That makes no sense. We all need to be on the same page.
Yeah.
And the policy is gonna do that for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'd like to see it, yeah. I'll email to just email to. You just did or when or? I just emailed it to uh Marshall. I'll email you. I appreciate it, yeah.
No, because right now with the way your your. Uh. Department head descriptions read they in versus your old policy, it's creating ambiguity too, so we need to get that cleaned up.
I agree, yeah. Well, my interpretation, which may be wrong, was that. It's still the department head's responsibility to interview and select. The hire, but it just has to be hired with the consent of the mayor. If you combine that.
Yes, job description and the policy together. It's still the department head's job to find the person. Yeah, that's been my policy all along.
At the college, we call that a hiring recommendation. You know, so you know, any of our department heads would make a hiring recommendation to the mayor.
Right.
I make a hiring recommendation to, I've got multiple layers. I go to my academic vice president, which then gets approved by HR and it also gets approved by the press.
And that's three levels. My understand, that's my understanding when you read the policy.
Yes.
Manual. Or the whatever it is.
Which is fine. There's no issue in the policy. I just was saying that. With meeting with Joel before. There's not, it wasn't necessary in the second interview and Joel stated that that wasn't something. He was worried about. He just wanted to be notified of.
I did.
The hire, which is fine and dandy, but obviously that policy was being followed, whatever that policy is. It just didn't happen.
Yeah, there's some miscommunication.
Yeah, yeah, but in the policy where it says with the second interview, it doesn't say there has to be one. It says there may be one.
Right.
And I don't think that's a completely stupid idea because if the. The department head makes a recommendation of somebody that nobody has any idea of anything. A quick little five minute phone call or something like that would be technically a second interview, but it would alleviate. Potentially alleviate a lot of problems and call for a second interview, but it allows for one.
And just be on the first one. Well, I I. You can ask things in a in your own interview as a supervisor with that person that. You know, it's they may have questions that, you know, they didn't bring up with the committee that they want to follow up with you. I mean, that's. That's pretty common. It happens in in my department. It happens at the college all the time. We have meetings. Somebody's coming in. Somebody's coming in to an interview for a faculty position. They interview with the committee, they interview with me. They also interview with our academic vice president. I mean, so there's multiple groups that go through this process and the interview that we have. Mine's maybe fifteen minutes or half an hour. My academic vice president is about fifteen minutes. I mean, we're not talking about detail. All the details come out in the main primary interview. But these are just, oh, yeah, I forgot to ask or or what have you thought about or you just it's those other things.
Where it's nice to have the option for a second interview.
Yeah, an option for one. I think an option is for one, yeah.
Which I don't know if that's ever happened. Where it's required a second one, but the options are.
I'm good with an option. Let's 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 get the documents documents from Marshall and through them and come up with some. Shared direction, I guess, is the bridge with that.
So we move on to six. Anybody feel we have a need for an executive session to discuss personnel?
You're the one to call it.
No, I mean, does anyone here? I I put it here in case it was needed.
No.
Anybody feel that we need to have that?
I don't know. Are we gonna need an executive session to get some of this hashed out because there's a lot of hard feelings? That can't, I don't know what the resolution is, but I know it has to be resolved.
So that motion have you going to executive session?
It was a it was a question of anybody, if if anybody or maybe. Our clerk or. Um, anybody feels the need to get some of this discussed as a group and out, then that that would be the.
That's what executive sessions are for.
Correct. Even Anki, Anki couldn't bitch about that one, right? I probably could, but it'd be unvalidated.
I think it's appropriate for us to go through all the things that happened. So everybody's aware of what actually happened.
Move, we go into executive session for the purposes personnel.
I was thinking it.
Been moved by Councilman Settler, second by Councilman Harky. We go into executive session. Any further discussion? None being, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Motion passed. All in affirmative.
Do you want me in there? If you do, please give me a call on my cell phone.
Yep, I'll call you.
Very good.
We're back into general session, we resume regular session.
Yeah.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Steller, second by Councilman Nordean, we go back in the regular session. Any discussion, none being in favor say aye. Aye. Motion opposed, and matter of motion passed at eight. Seven thirty-three?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-seven, thirty-four.
Sounds like a good one.
Yeah. We've came out of executive session on personnel issues. There's going to be no action taken, and I have a motion to adjourn.
I want to make a motion first.
It's not on the agenda, we can't.
Oh, we can't? Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda for next.
If it isn't specifically advertised.
I want to make, I want to make a motion that we adjourn.
One second.
Yeah.
Then.
We'll do adjourn, yeah.
Who made the first, who made the second? Tammy made the first.
Yeah, I'll leave the second.
Okay.
The council on hard keep moved, and second by Councilman Nordean that we close this special meeting in the Shoshone Town Council. Any further discussion?
I just would like to thank everybody for taking time out of their day to address the issues and, and being open-minded and, and that's all I have.
And it's all coming together to do, taking care of this.
It is important.
Yep.
This is like a very good meeting we had, so very good. Any further discussion, none being in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same, motion passed, all in the affirmative. Seven thirty-five?
Yep.